Okay, it's approaching seven o'clock. So we have a shot at getting out before twelve AM. We're going for eight. That's my target. It's my target. Not that I want to preclude comment or conversation, but I see a lot of friendly spaces in the audience. Okay, we have a quorum here. Ed Dennis is out of town and will not be available to call in. So we'll proceed. We have, I've asked Ellen Burns to give our opening prayer, after which Harrison Hewitt will do our, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If it's not green, push the button on the bottom of the mic.
At the base.
On the base of the mic.
Should be a green light.
Our dear heavenly father, we're so grateful unto thee for this chance we have to attend the Highland City Council meeting and to be a part of everything that's going on in this wonderful city. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have to live here and for all of the great things that are going on here. We ask thee to help us that we can be good stewards over the time that we have and the responsibilities that we have and that we can be able to serve thee in our hearts in all that we do. And we say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Audience, please rise. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're starting the meeting with unscheduled public appearances. If there's an item that you wish to speak to that is on the agenda, I would ask that you defer until that point in time. I will allow public input when we hit that item. There was one item on the agenda that is canceled. It's the public hearing on the conditional use for property located at fifty-six hundred west ten four hundred north for a community park. We canceled that because the planning commission, when they met, asked the city to come back with some additional information. So we, we can't have a discussion on that because we have, it has to go through them first. So that item has been canceled. If you're, if you have a comment to make, please feel free to come up now. And let's try and keep it three minutes, possible? Thanks. State your name when you come up, so we know who you are.
My name is Brady Mather. I've been a Highland resident for seventeen years and have enjoyed living here in the community. I just wanted to take a minute and just voice my support of the park that's over by the middle school, specifically the pickleball courts. I've been playing pickleball for about three years and thoroughly enjoyed it. Many times spending time over at the Alpine Courts and typically in the summertime, those courts are filled up and so it's difficult to get a spot. So it'd be wonderful if we could, if we could have the courts here in Highland. I think it also could be an add to the community and the tax revenue basis. Potentially it could draw in tournaments from what I understand, which I think would be a, a great thing that could help support some of the maintenance of the park. So I wish I could stay longer, but I've got other commitments. So I wanted to get up here and just express that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paul Burnside. I've lived in Highland for fourteen years. I'd like to voice my support for the park as well. Started playing pickleball six years ago. My dad's seventy-six years old. He was seventy years old. Introduced it to me and he still plays three times a week. It's good for my knees. It's gonna be great for the community. The fields are desperately needed. When I coached the lacrosse team for Lone Peak, there's no place to play. Soccer teams still are clamoring for space. Ultimate Frisbee would love to have more places to play that are cheaper. This'll fit in with the vision of the city. It's been on the plans for ten years. Those neighbors who don't like it, maybe don't like the park, but it's been set aside to be a park and we need it to be a park. And I'm really happy for it, so, um, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
My name is Erin Burns and I live at sixty-two oh five west one zero zero five zero north Highland, Utah. And I've lived in Highland for as long as I can remember, so. You can calm down because I don't need anything from you and I'm not here to complain. I just wanted to offer my sincere thanks to the City Council for supporting the Highland City Arts Council and making their programs a possibility. From the time that I was a little girl, I remember participating in all the different programs that the Highland City Arts Council has to offer. The Highland City Arts Council has been a benefit to me by allowing me the opportunity to enter my projects and art shows, to star in theatrical productions and to enjoy world-class music. As a current student at Brigham Young University, I can tell you that Utah seems like it is a land of prodigies, where in order to participate in anything, you have to either be a child genius or who have parents who can pay enough money that it doesn't matter if you're a child genius. Never in my wildest dreams would I have ever been able to nab one of the four female roles in adult production of Anne Frank or win a third-place prize for a quilting project I did when I was twelve, because I'm not a prodigy and my parents aren't millionaires. But the Arts Council programs give Highland residents opportunities that they might not otherwise have. Just this past summer, they offered a youth theater program at a significantly cheaper rate than any of the surrounding cities. Now, I'm a libertarian-leaning Republican and I don't want any government to appropriate exorbitant amounts of money to organizations whose sole purpose is to promote the arts. But that's why I am so passionately grateful for your work towards the Highland City Arts Council. First, the Arts Council is largely financially independent from the city, sponsoring programs that are completely self-sufficient and using only three thousand dollars every year of city funds for free events that are open to the entire city. Secondly, the Arts, the Arts Council programs not only promote the arts, they strengthen our community and our citizens. I've made lifelong friendships and connections through these programs that have, and they have provided me with the confidence and the skillset that I need to be who I am today, which is not a student in piano performance. The Arts Council provides classy, affordable and enjoyable forms of entertainment and education for members of our city and it has truly been one of the greatest things about living in Highland. I've recently been made aware that none of this could have happened without your generous support. So I just wanted to take some time to say thank you for supporting our community by minimizing the cost of these programs, by providing, by providing publicity opportunities in the city newsletter and most importantly, for allowing the Arts Council to use the community center, which has become a prominent memory in my childhood. I know that none of the benefits to the community could be provided by the Arts Council without this asset. And with it, the Arts Council can continue to promote benefits for the community and hopefully will be able to do so for years to come. Thank you for your support, councilman.
Thank you. Can I ask a favor? Can you email me that? Thanks.
Can I just make a comment? You know, Erin helped us with the, the float last year in the summer with the parade. She's been awesome. And I just want to kind of reiterate that Arts Council, when they say that they only get three thousand, they also help sponsor our Christmas program for the whole entire city. They're also gonna do when we do our, our city open houses with other things. Their three thousand dollars is probably one of the best we've spent and they are self-sustaining, meaning that when they generate and do their plays, their money's going back to help with all the other arts. I think they're a good example of a successful program in the city that's not coming and saying, hey, can you help us get more funds? They're looking to see how they can do it. They're going out and getting donations. They are a great organization within our city, so thank you.
All right. Any more plugs for the Art Council? Any more plugs for anything else?
Not for the Art Council, but this will be extremely brief. My name is Tyler Loon and I've been a Highland resident for many years, I think twenty or so. Went to all the schools here, Mountain Ridge, Highland, Lone Peak, everything like that. Recently, I've started playing pickleball and it's taken me across literally the world. I've gone to different countries, different states. And it's just a really great sport and so I'm extremely for this park. Right now, there are very, I don't think there's any actual pickleball courts or many park spaces or places to recreate outside of, or in Highland. And so I think this park would be awesome. It's very much needed. There's, like the previous guy was saying, you have to go to Alpine or other cities. And Highland residents, they would probably prefer to be in their own city to play the sports that they love. And so I think it would be a really good option for Highland and it would bring in a lot of outside people to see this beautiful city and the mountains and this great state of Utah. So, thank you.
Tyler?
Yes?
Have you ever placed in any tournament?
Uh, yes. I was recently in California and I was on ESPN. That's my acclaim to fame. And so I've placed in a couple of tournaments as well. So, yeah, it was a lot of fun.
Thanks.
Hi, Sherry Kramer. Didn't plan on speaking tonight. A lot of the residents saw that this was canceled from the agenda, so they didn't show up. But I'm here and just want you to know that I still don't agree with, with the plan. I love pickleball. From what I've learned about it, I think it is a great sport. I think this is a beautiful facility and I think it's also very expensive. I would like to suggest that you possibly, I have a tennis court in my neighborhood. Resurface it and make it multi-use and make it pickleball as well. I know that people in the neighborhood would actually love that, so thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Lizembe. I have lived in Highland for thirty years. I live fifty-one oh one Oak Grove Lane down in Hidden Oaks. And I started playing pickleball probably a year ago. I was introduced to it by some friends of ours who have since moved to St. George. And it, it's wonderful. I, Thanksgiving, I taught my whole family how to play pickleball to my grandkids, my nine and ten-year-old grandkids. I gave them pickleball paddles and balls and we've been out playing. Last summer, we would go down up to Alpine because there's no, no courts here or down into Art Die Park. And it was hard to get onto the park, onto the courts. And I remember playing one time with a woman who had to be eighty-five years old. And she was with probably some of her adult grandchildren playing. And then when we got onto the courts, I was on the courts with my nine and ten-year-old and some other friends and their grandchildren. And we had to wait to get onto the court because there was a whole slew of high school students down there playing. So my plug for pickleball is, it is something that can be enjoyed by all ages. And I think about, from the time that we've lived in, in Highland, thirty years, there's not been a lot of park development other than inside neighborhoods, which who goes and enjoys those parks except the neighbors who live in that park? So I think the opportunity to build this facility will bring some recognition to Highland. And as I understand it, it can be self-sustaining from the tournaments that can come in. And I think it will be a good thing for our city and put us on the map. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen Hewitt. Pretty recent resident to Highland, only about six months. Moved up here from the mecca of pickleball, St. George. And I'll tell you one thing. You know, I agree with those that have gone before me in stating their support for the facility. It's, I'll tell you, down in St. George, it's, it's huge. There were parks that were built. They realized they built them too small, they expanded them larger. And this facility, believe it or not, I heard about this facility over a year ago while I was in St. George. People were excited that Highland was getting a facility like this as well. They are very profitable. I mean, they're in St. George, not only do they host the Huntsman Games for pickleball, but they also host, oh, at one of the courts, eight or, eight or ten at least, large tournaments a year that bring in a lot of money for them and they're definitely self-sustaining. And with my family, you know, I've got several kids. We all love to play it. It's a fun activity to play. It's, uh, it's, it's healthy. We all need to move more. We all need to be a little more active. And this is a way to allow all types of people and all generations to be able to do so. And it's not a very expensive sport to get into. And so that's my support.
Good evening. My name is Amy Thackeray and I am not a Highland resident. I am an Alpine resident of twelve years. With just very briefly, just a couple of other considerations. I, I help out in many different ways in my community. I actually help coach through the Lone Peak Ultimate Frisbee program. Very large program, which is growing because there's a need for that. And I also run an academic history contest called National History Day for the Utah County region, which involves students all over Utah County, a lot from Alpine School District, but not just all over. And so being a part of these experiences has really helped me appreciate what community is. I live in Alpine, but I come to Highland and give you a lot of my tax money. I shop at Ridley's, I shop at CVS, I go to the Instacare, Wells Fargo. I mean, you know, we do that because...
Thank you, thank you, by the way.
Happy to do it. Because, you know, I don't have access to all that in Alpine. Alpine does have pickleball courts, which of course you know, is in the area. I am not an avid pickleball player. I do play. I prefer other athletic endeavors such as triathlons and long-distance athletics. But, 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 I do appreciate the sense of community that I get in this area. And I'm happy to serve, just as you are. Thank you for your time. It's kind of a thankless job being involved in civic government. But I just want you to know that it makes a difference. Just like me and my very tiny way, I'm not tooting my own horn. That's not my point at all. We all go about doing different things that bless the lives of others. I don't have children in this academic history contest that I will spend close to a thousand hours doing. Hundred percent volunteer. We do what we need to do because we're part of a community. And the fact that we are part of a community sets us apart, I believe, from other places where we live. There's a reason why people come here. So I don't live in Highland, but I know my life will be blessed through a complex like this, just as like as countless people have said. And the beauty of it, it's not just young people and it's not just old people. It's inclusive for everybody. So thank you for your time and for your service and working through this process because I know it is a process for everybody to be heard. So thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dan Stratton and a resident of Highland. Just wanted to say thank you for everything. The arts program especially, big fan of it. I've been in a couple of their plays and really enjoy it and look forward to be able to do that again. I'm also a fan of pickleball. That's probably the main reason I came tonight. But probably more than that, I am a big fan of community places to gather. As our kids have finally got out of the house, my wife and I have been traveling more and we have noticed in other communities, some places, the parks are dead. Nobody goes there. We go to other places. They're thriving. I know my wife sent a, an email to one of you about Santa Barbara. We went there, there was a park, there was a, you know, there were people all over the place. There was a group of citizens that just got together just to play music together, have a good time and just be out amongst each other, which I think would be a wonderful thing for us to have here in Highland. And I know you encouraged her to, to donate, so I'm here to say that the CEO, President of Timpanoga Speech Clinic, one of our thriving small businesses here, she's gonna put up the money for a little bit, two hundred dollars. She wants to get involved with this too. We think it's a great thing to get people to, to donate. I think that's a good way to go to. But I want to encourage the city's support too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello there, I'm Eric Gertler, also a resident of Highland. I will jump on the pickleball bandwagon as well. I support and agree with everything that's been stated here tonight. I'm gonna give a little bit additional perspective on it as well. I've been playing pickleball for about thirty years. I've been teaching pickleball clinics, lessons for the past three years. The demand is enormous, of course, as you've heard from some of the other residents tonight. But in addition to that, in my church, about a year ago, I received a request to be our stakes pickleball specialist. Now, I don't know how many people hear LDS, but this is not a calling that has existed within our church at all until recently. The reason that they extended the calling to me is because of the demand for pickleball, number one, but also the ability that it has to bring families together from, you know, the age of five all the way up to a hundred. And I've been able to witness this in, in my teaching of pickleball. To give one example, I do clinics in my church building. You know, typically, I try to do it once every couple of months. The first time, about three people showed up because no one knew what it was. And then by the second clinic that I taught, there were about forty people that showed up. Since then, I receive text messages and emails almost every day, people asking about this great, exciting new sport of pickleball. Really cool story. You know, I, I've had people come to these clinics who could barely walk, who, who have told me that they can't do any other activities, but they can get on a court and they could hold a paddle and they can hit it back and forth. And it's actually brought joy to the, the lives of people who felt that they couldn't do anything enjoyable with their children and grandchildren. And so I think that putting this complex in is gonna not only, you know, be great for the community just to go and, and, you know, and play, but for those individuals who feel like they, they haven't been able to participate in the more traditional sports. This is something that's really fantastic that I've seen firsthand. You know, literally miracles in people's lives who, who suffer from things emotionally, physically, whatever. And it's truly a healing activity from that regard as well. So I throw my support completely behind the park that's hopefully being built soon. Thanks so much.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members. My name is Dan Riley. I've been a resident of Highland for over twenty years. And I am here to also support the building of this park as it's been planned and designed for pickleball. I firmly believe that pickleball as a sport is a wonderful family event. As has been stated already, the, it can be played at all ages, from very young. My five-year-old granddaughter is already learning to play and all the way up to my, my wife and I and all of my, all of my married children. My son-in-law is very involved in pickleball in the St. George area. He lives about a mile away from a twenty-four court facility. That facility is built in what wasn't a residential area at the time it was probably built. But a lot of homes in there, very, very small streets. I do not see, and many times that I have been there, any problems with traffic. I don't know exactly what the opposition is really saying or what their concerns are. But I liken that facility very much to the facility that would be built here in Highland. I cannot see how there would be any negative impact. It's a wonderful location for a, a city park. It's central to Highland. It's close to the schools. The traffic and facilities that are being used in that area around the junior high, just for soccer and different things like that. I've gotta give you an understanding that it's not gonna create any more problems than it already, than it already exists. But I don't think that that really is a problem. So I want to just echo what everyone else's support and throw my weight and, and, and support for this park. Please, please support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, first I'd just like to say, this is really out of my comfort zone. So, but I, I'm for the park. So I, I started playing pickleball about six months ago. I live right here in Highland.
Could you give us your name, please?
Yeah, it's Natalie Thompson.
Thank you.
And, what was that? I live here in Highland. So a little bit about myself before pickleball. I, I've been divorced for a couple of years. I have three kids. And I didn't have many hobbies. I didn't have much, any like driving force in my life, besides dating. Anyway, so, that's a joke. But yeah, so. So, and then I had a friend, I met a friend downtown and he said he played pickleball every day. I'm like, I've been wanting to learn that. I've been hearing it everywhere. So I decided to go with him. And the first thing I noticed was there were men, women, kids, teenagers, old people, young people, people of all shapes, sizes. And they were all beating me, like they were really good. And I was just like, how is this sport so inclusive to everyone? Like this is amazing. So, and I played for about an hour and everyone kept playing. And I thought, why are they still playing? Like, it's time to go home, I'm tired. But then I quickly learned that it's addicting and you want to just stay and play for hours. And it's amazing, the, the courts that are here locally, you go in the summer and they're completely full. You cannot get on. I've taken my family to play and we have to like sit and wait for a court and run onto the court. So I just have no doubt that like twenty-seven courts sounds like a lot, but it's definitely something that's needed and I know that it'll be just in addition to the community and quite amazing. I asked my friend to send me a message of why he thinks. And he's kind of in my situation of like younger, single person in my age. And this is what he said. Pickleball has completely changed my mood and lifestyle. I used to stay up late and sleep till eleven. Now it's the opposite and way better. I definitely am a happier person because of it and already have made so many friends. If pickleball were taken from me tomorrow, I honestly would feel lost. And I know that sounds a little dramatic, but it's true. It's brought so much joy to my life, so I'm definitely for pickleball.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you.
I am very disappointed in you men up here. I've looked back on the city notes and seen the videos of you gentlemen talking to this lady behind me about secret meetings.
Can you, can you give us for the record your name and...
Corey Wilkinson.
Thanks.
Highland resident. Orem City Council. The October council notes were very disheartening to me and very disappointing. I felt that I have had several conversations with you gentlemen that I thought were truthful, that I felt were realistic of your thoughts, realistic of your positions. And outside of Kurt Osler, I was the complete opposite of what I saw. About trying to go around the citizens, trying to push things through, things that we do not have the money for, we do not have the need for. And going against the citizens that voted for each of you. And I don't understand it. I've looked at the money. Money does not add up. I've looked at the sports and how they, the oncoming sports and what's new and what is the trends. Pickleball is a small portion of that. I'm not anti-pickleball. I have my own court in my own yard. But this doesn't make sense for this city. We don't have the money for schools. We don't have the money for streets. We don't have the money for sidewalks. Things that will keep our community safe, that will keep our community the way it is, why each of us moved here. The property values the way they are. You're going against all of it because one person or her group of people have told you how amazing and wonderful it is. It is amazing and wonderful, but a city of eighteen thousand does not need to supply the twenty-seven pickleball courts that are necessary, apparently for people from outside of our city to play and enjoy. We're not representing the, the community that, that we all live in by building these twenty-seven courts unnecessarily and without the money, without the need. And I know she's gonna get up here and say how we need to do it right now, we need to rush us through. If we need to rush it through, there's a reason, because it's wrong. Because there's no need to rush it through. We should be doing our due diligence, not trying to ram it through to hopefully get a tournament that may stay once or never come back again. There's no need to rush it through. There's no need to ram it through. I know when I look back to all the surveys, overwhelmingly are against this. And I hope you gentlemen will reconsider.
Thank you. Just a reminder, this is not on the agenda for today. This is public comment preceding the meeting. We canceled the item on the agenda today. Okay, next.
So, I wasn't gonna stand up today because you guys have heard from me for, I don't know.
Three minutes. You have three minutes.
My name's Lorna Reed and I live here in Highland. There's a lot of misinformation going around about pickleball courts. There's, you guys all know about, oh. You guys all know about the misinformation that's going around about the pickleball courts. I don't know why people are doing that. I don't know why it's important for people to skew the facts in one way or another. I think it's pretty clear if you have facts, you can make a decision. I do want to remind, not you guys, because I know you guys know this, but I just would like to say what the Highland City General Plan said that was crafted in 2008. "The vision for Highland City transcends the boundaries of the community, incorporating and embracing its neighboring communities. Cooperation is a cornerstone of the city, a characteristic that is on par with its scenic setting, which is highly valued. It is the responsibility of Highland City citizens to preserve and protect the qualities that make the community special and reach out to its neighbors to ensure the shared resources and values, that the values are preserved for all." Unfortunately, through this, this is kind of not happening. We're not coming together as a community. There's sort of some pretty angry voices. And anybody who states their opinion in any fashion are vilified. You, me, anybody who posts on our Facebook page are vilified. The primary question everybody asks is, are you from Highland? Are you from Highland? Are you from Highland? Okay, we're all from this area. There's a whole bunch of people who you've heard from that are from Highland. Lots of emails over the course of the last year of people who are from Highland. So Highland people want pickleball courts. There's a way to have them in our city and to have them sustain themselves so they aren't a burden on the city, which is the purpose of this. There is a great need for a park. And we all know that the option is not, whatever park somebody can think up while they're standing up here, or this. It is dirt or a complex, what it was built for, what it was bought for, what it was purchased for. A sports complex. We all know that it's gonna be dirt, not their dream park, or a sports complex. One of those two things. It's not going to be your dream park. It's not. So anyhow, I just thought I'd remind everybody, not up here, but back here, what our general plan says, so.
Thank you.
Hi, Vanessa Moody from Highland. I just, I appreciate what the mayor said because that's exactly what we understood, is that this was not on the agenda tonight, right? And I found out we were just doing a service project with our youth. And I just got the message that, hey, they're talking about it. People are coming in the open comments and they're talking about it. So I just thought it was fair for me to hurry and run over here and just, just talk about some of the facts real quick. I have a couple of minutes here. And I think the important thing is the research. I think the facts and the research calling other cities that have these, especially national facilities, places in other areas that are not just necessarily Utah. There's not another court that would be 27 in the state of Utah. So it's a big deal. So I really think the research definitely needs to be done. We talked last week about the traffic study, the noise abatement, those noise studies. And you know what? I don't doubt that there are groups of people here in Highland that want the 27 pickleball courts. I don't doubt it. And I think that that's fine. Everybody's entitled to their own opinion. But I do know that when Lorna talks about misinformation, man, have I seen misinformation coming around. And I think that that's what has gotten people, a lot of people upset. And the misinformation is not necessarily, it's like half-truths. It's not necessarily like, I don't think people are out to get and say, you know what? You've lied about this. You've lied about that. It's, I really, what I've seen is a lot of beating around the bush and just twisting a little bit just to, and from just different parties, different people. And so I think the main thing going into this is our eyes wide open, using the planning commission and really taking it for what it is with the research. Not, hey, I'll get the money and everything will be honky-dory and everything will, and ease us into this. I think we've gotta have the money. The money has got to be there. I'm not a money person. I don't understand finances as well as my husband. He's a financial analyst. And he looks at budgets and numbers all day and he says, I don't understand this and why they're moving forward with it. So for me, this is really hard. And like I said, it's not on the agenda tonight, but apparently we've got a group of people here that says it is. So I just wanted to come and put my two cents in. Thanks.
Thank you.
I also have a copy of the general plan and I just wanna read a little section of it where it says, "It is the responsibility of Highland City citizens to preserve and protect the qualities that make the community special." Thank you.
What was your name?
Sherri Kramer, Highland resident.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we can move on to the agenda. We have on the consent item, a motion to ratify planning commissioner appointments, continue, reappoint Christopher Kemp, appointment of Claude Jones as a full council member, a commission member, and Audrey Wright as an alternate. If Audrey or Claude are here, could you stand? I don't see them. Claude, council member, as you may know, he also serves on the library board and would continue to do that. He's retired, so he has time. And he was on a city council for seven years and has also worked in city government for at least 15. I've talked to all of them. I think they would be assets. Do I have a motion?
I move that the city council ratify the mayor's recommendation of Chris Kemp, Claude Jones, and Audrey Wright to serve on the planning commission.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we are ready for a vote. We're voting electronically today. Some days we do, some days we don't. The tech gods are happy today, so I think we are.
Yes and no.
Maybe they are.
My laptop won't work.
For the record, Scott got it before you, Brian.
I get it.
I'm on my iPhone.
Now, we have this lovely square in front of us that is blank because it's not working. So you see us looking back here. We're looking to see what's on the board there.
But I beat Tim, so I'm still, I'm still not last. That's sad when you can beat me with your iPhone.
Do you wanna voice vote, Tim, and we can get you ready for the next one?
Yeah, I'll vote yes.
Okay, that is unanimous. Next item, item three was canceled. As discussed previously, item four is Tetera final plat approval. Nathan, did you got that?
Tara will have that for us. Great.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. So William and Dorothy Tetera are requesting a final plat approval for a one-lot subdivision. It is located approximately at 9913 North and 6180 West, so it's north of that property. It is gonna be .8 acres. This is the site plan that they are proposing. They are proposing the one-lot subdivision so they can have it, so they can create a single-family residential home on the property. For citizen participation, we did a development review committee. Three residents attended that committee during that time. And we have not received any written correspondence about this subdivision. We also conducted a radius notification for a planning commission. We didn't need to conduct one for city council.
So one observation, this is just to the east of the land we just sold and where we're building a small park. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. It's just to the east of Spring Creek Park.
Any, go ahead.
So for your consideration, the recorded plat conforms to the final plat date stamped November 20th, 2018, except as modified by these stipulations. All public improvements shall be installed as required by the city engineer. The civil construction plan shall meet all requirements as determined by the city engineer.
So just as you mentioned, all the public improvements, so they will be improving that road and connecting that. Will that now connect that complete road there?
Yes.
So that road now will be able to be a through road, official?
So they will do curb, gutter, and sidewalk on the west side of the portion of the route. But yes, that road, the 6180 road, will be asphalted.
But will now, there used to be a gap where there were just kind of a dirt. Will this now complete that section so that will now be a connecting road?
Yes, that'll be connecting.
So the property to the south, they're going to finish that as well, as part of this plan?
Well, right now that one was done in 2002. They did a single one-lot subdivision in 2002. And they never built on that lot.
Because I drove through there and I didn't think that was done. I missed it. Looked at the wrong place. Okay.
No, but Brian, I think you have a good question. I'm not sure of the other lot that got approved at this road. They've improved it all the way. I just wanna make sure this road's gonna be improved and now connecting is a complete road.
Yeah, so it'll be connected. Now you'll have half plus 12, which is half the normal asphalt of a regular road plus 12 feet.
On the second piece, but it won't have curb and gutter?
On the.
South one.
East side. There will not be curb and gutter on the east side. There will be curb and gutter on the west side.
All the way south to the?
Yeah, and that's already in, I believe.
Yeah, and we wouldn't expect it to be on the east side since they're not developing that, but, good.
Any questions I can address as well?
Comments? Ready for a motion?
I would move that we approve the, my mouse isn't working either. We approve the final plat for the one-lot subdivision for the Tetera property, which is approximately .8 acres located at 9913 North, 6180 West.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Do we need to make sure there's the three stipulations from the planning commission? So we need to also, as part of that, that the three stipulations that are recommended from the planning commission?
Yep, sorry. We'll include that as part of the motion.
I'll second that.
Reseconded. Are we ready, ready to vote?
So for those of you who are here because of the book Pickleball, we'd love to have you stay as long as you want. I think it's good for you to see how the city council works. But you're not going to offend anybody on the city council if you decide that you wanna leave because you've got other things going on in your lives. But love having you here. It's nice when people come. It's better than having a bunch of empty seats. And you'll actually learn a lot of other stuff, but really won't be any other discussion on pickleball.
That motion passes 4-0.
Okay. Next item, Donna with the library, action approval of library board bylaws.
For several months, the library board has been working on a rewrite of their bylaws to make them reflect the city and state code and to clarify the library board's role. The board has also created an operation procedures manuals that they will use, that is for the use of the board in practical function of the organization. And I am here to hope that you would approve the library board bylaws as you receive them in your packets. Does anyone have any question?
I have a couple.
Sure.
So Donna and maybe Mr. Dixon, who's the library board chair at this time, can elaborate. But could you estimate how many hours you folks have spent on this? I mean, I've attended some of the meetings, but it's been a number of hours.
As far as I know, they've been working on it off and on for about seven months at the library board meetings. I think Erin would have a better insight on that, but yeah, it's been a long time and they worked very hard. And we've worked in conjunction with the council. We met with the council as well. And I'm really pleased with the document that they finally approved. I think it meets the requirements that we were looking for.
Yeah, and I think Erin can vouch for this too, that they went over every word and every sentence and revised them numerous times.
I think we had eight revisions, eight different drafts over the time. So I just did some quick math out of curiosity. So if we had eight people who spent two hours over the course of about eight meetings, it was 128 hours. And that doesn't count all of the time that got put in individually out of meetings by each of the different board members and things. So it's been a long process for sure, but I think I'm really excited about the product, so.
You know, I really appreciate all that time. You guys have done an awesome job in putting something together. One of the biggest problems, I shouldn't say biggest problems, but a serious problem that we've had, I think between the council and the board, has been just a lack of communication, a lack of clarity on certain things. And I think that you guys have done a great job. I've got a few items that I would like to talk about in here that I think are missing or not very clear. And the only reason why I'm bringing it up is because of the fact that it wasn't clear enough and individuals, when they disagree, become very picky in the wording. And I feel like that there's some wording in here and some things in here that if we cleaned it up, I would hope that it would cause less issues in the future. If you go under section D, it talks about members. There's nothing in there that talks about the time period, a term. I think it's appropriate that we put a term in there that matches what the ordinance says so that we've got clarity in both places. I think most people will come here for the information first before they would look into the city ordinance. And I think that we want them aligned as much as possible, especially on important things. I think it's also important that we state in here that the board members' names and their serving term will be published on the Highland City website. One of the disagreements and one of the miscommunications was the fact that there wasn't a clear record, a public record, for everybody to see what, who is on the board and what their term was, so that we can make sure that that is out there for everybody to see. In here, under D or E, under officers, it says that the library director serves as the board executive officer. A little bit further down, it actually states in the policies, it clarifies it under section four, under board meeting procedures. It says the executive officer and then it puts in parentheses, library director. Throughout this whole document, it goes back and forth between executive director and library director. I think that we want some clarity. Is it director? Is the director the executive director? Is the library director the executive, or are they not? Because if they're not, then we can have those switching back and forth. If they are one and the same, then we ought to be consistent throughout the whole document and what that would be. Very, very simple change, but I think these are the kinds of things that cause some confusion and frustration when people start pointing at words. In here, under G, it talks about the responsibilities. And it says, "In general, the board shall maintain and care for the library and shall establish policies for the library's operation consistent with policies made by the city council." And in G2, that's in G1, in G2, under 2B, it says that there are specific responsibilities to approve, amend, and repeal policies for governing the library. To be consistent with one, they need to put, we need to have in there the consistent with the policies made by the city council as well, so that we're not having one place talk about it being consistent with the city council and the second one stating a similar process but excluding the city council.
So Brian, could it say, "In general, under the city council direction, the board shall maintain and care for the library"? Is that what you're recommending?
Enter what section?
G1. "In general, under the city council direction, the board shall maintain and care for the library." That was, is that what you're talking about?
Well, I'm saying that on the end of that sentence.
You're not talking about 2B, right?
I'm talking about 1.
G1.
G1, the first sentence, and 2B basically say a similar thing, except 1 talks about it being consistent with city council and 2B does not. talks about it being, uh, consistent with city council and two B does not. I think they should be the same for consistency. So we would add into two B, uh, amend, approve, amend, and repeal policies for governing the library, uh, consistent with policies made by the city council. If we go down to, um, the library board, our organizational operation procedures, a, again, one of my, my concern is to make sure that we are all consistent in what we see, and if, if there's a disagreement in, in some of the wording, I think now is the time we need to make sure that the council and the, and the board are understanding of, of their roles in this whole thing, and that's why I'm bringing this up. So under one, uh, Roman numeral run, one, it says the role of the library board. Under A, it says the role of the library board is to establish a clear mission for the library and a strategic plan, allowing the library to achieve that mission, I believe it should say, with the advise and consent of the city council, because that's consistent throughout the whole, um, responsibility of the board is, they do not have their own responsibility run unless it's consistent with the board or with the city council. Those are the same words that are used when the mayor makes an appointment, that he can do a lot of things, but he still has to have the advice and consent of the city council, and I think that wording should be added to the end of that sentence for consistency with, with what the city council should do and what, um, the board should do. In that same light, under two B, it says volunteer applications for nominees for open board seats shall be discussed in a board meeting, and the board shall make recommendations to the mayor. I think it should be clear in here what that process is. The mayor will then appoint members to the board with the advice and consent of the city council.
Brian, can I interrupt you a little bit? Uh, I don't know how many comments you have, but I wonder if it'd be more efficient if you send that to staff and have us update them and meet with the board and, and get those addressed. I think it'd be good to review them, I just, I don't know how effective we'd be trying to make every change by motion right now. Does that make sense? Save Cindy a headache.
It's up to the council. There aren't that many. Um, and, and I guess my biggest reason for bringing these up is to have the dialogue, is there any concern with this? And, and my point in this is really to make sure that we are as, as clean and clear as possible as a council and a board in understanding what our responsibilities are and who has ownership of what, and, uh, I, I feel like that it's not as clear as it should be.
I, I appreciate what Brian has done to go through this, but I, I do think it would be good, uh, for you to, uh, to give them to staff so they could review and go through it with the board so that there's, because I don't think we as a council want to take any action until we get a re, uh, a reaction from the board. But I do agree that we want, um, that we do want, uh, clarity here. This is what's caused the problem in the past.
I'd just like my comment, I, I would just like to ask Roger Dixon, I mean, you've just heard a lot of the comments that Brian has made and, and the board's spent a lot of time on that. Do you have any concerns with the things he's bringing up?
Roger Dixon, library board. I don't have any issues with what he has said, it's just that the issues he has raised, uh, goes to the way we work this out. We decided as an operating principle, and we, we don't have to do it this way, but if it's, if it's specifically stated in the municipal code, we need not repeat it in the library bylaws, and if it's specifically stated in the library bylaws, we need not repeat it in the operating procedures. We can change that, there are quite a few more than you have mentioned that would need to go in it, and it's fine to, fine to redo it that way, but I guess what we need would be your guidance so that we could be consistent all the way through. If we're going to repeat it, uh, things that are in the municipal code, in the bylaws, and in the operating procedures, that's fine, but I, I would just like to have, uh, your direction on that.
I would just, can I voice my opinion? I, I agree with Roger. If, if we can make a change in one place, i- if we put it everywhere, then if you make it in one place, it's likely that in the future, we'd forget to change it in the other, and then we'd end up with dissonance again. Um, so I think that's wise. I, I would say maybe there's some other things where we can be very clear, um, like with the advice and consent of the council, that can be multiple places, that's okay.
And I would, I would agree, Roger, from the perspective of changing it in one place, but I think it needs to reference from here. It would need to say, "Term, see this section of code," because my concern is this...
Yeah, we had that in there and took it out, so we, we know how to fix that.
Sorry. And, and it doesn't have to state it, it just has to point to it, and, and that way, it's only changed in one place, so if it ever gets changed...
Right.
The concern I have is that this is typically the document will, that will be passed out to any new board member, and they will read this, and this is where the confusion comes in, is we had lots of different dialogue coming about what they were reading, but they didn't have the full picture, and I would really like this document to have the information, so as you hand it to a new board member, they have a complete picture. And I don't have any problem with them referencing back to the ordinance code, but it really, you know, my, my concern is clarity, and I think it's really important that we have this document pointing everywhere that is important to these individuals, uh, and, and a term is, is really critical, that's, that's key to this whole thing, not key. It's one of the major issues that was brought up in the last piece, I hope that it never happens again, but there were other places that I, you know, in looking at this document, I know that in past experiences on boards and committees, these are the kinds of things that get handed out, and that's what you look at to see what your responsibilities are. If they choose not to read it, but it's clearly pointed, you need to go here to get the information, then that's, that's the individual's responsibility, and they're bad if they don't choose to do it.
We took the same approach with respect to things that are in the state code. We don't repeat those directly either. We have references in them before, and, uh, we could put those back in as well if you thought that was...
Well, you still have some references to the state code, which is good.
Yeah, but we don't have all of the references that we could have. Oh, we, we, again, for me, this is not a moral issue by any stretch, it's just what, what you all think would be the best way, and I, I take your point that we need to be as clear as possible, uh, and, uh, I would say, however, in, in the future, board members would receive both the bylaws and the operating procedures.
Yes, but, but they wouldn't receive is the city code or the state.
Yeah, but we could get, we give them one page for the city code.
And that's my point is, if, if you don't give them that, this gives them the opportunity, they can go find it, they can look at it and go, "Well, where is that work?" And I find it, at least brings up the question and doesn't leave it out.
You can just do an extract on one page and if, if we can do a handout when the comment can change.
Right, and I, I agree that having it in one place, having it in both places, then if it changes, you're going back and forth.
Yeah.
I, I don't disagree. I think that's a, that's a great idea.
So Roger, I want, I know the library board's put a lot of time on this, I want to be sensitive for their time going forward, so the question we had was, Brian has some recommended, I only had two changes I was going to recommend, Brian seems to have more. I want to be sensitive to, we want, to me, I want to kind of start moving forward, you know what I mean? I'm going, okay, you guys have spent a lot of time on this, do you feel like we're going to be okay if we go back for one more comment revision with the board, or would you like us to work it out tonight? I think that was the question, is would you rather have us kind of go through it tonight and pass it tonight, or would you rather have us give recommendation, go back to the board and come back?
I'd rather do the latter myself.
Okay.
I don't think it's your role to do that, I think it's our job and we can do it, and it, you say moving forward, we've been moving forward.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So I can tell by this document that it's three pages, I mean, I thought, this is awesome.
Well, yeah, but, but we want to get it right.
So I'd just like to recommend that Kurt and Brian give their suggestions to the staff and have the staff work with the library board and bring this back. It just seems to me like Brian just wants, or Councilman Braithwaite, basically wants a lot of references to the advice and consent of the city council. I mean, I don't have a big problem with that, so I, I think you need to put that in there, yeah.
I say you want clarity, and that's what we want as well.
That's really it, to make sure that everybody that comes on doesn't come in with wrong, wrong impression.
Absolutely.
Do you want to put that in the form of a motion, does it say let's...
Yeah, I'll move that we continue, um, this item to our next meeting and that, um, Councilman Braithwaite and Councilman Ossler will provide, uh, their comments to staff who will provide it to the, uh, library board, and if, if you need more time, we can continue beyond that, but I'd like to have it in the next one so that you at least know that we're, we're ready to move on it.
Did you say the next meeting or next month?
Next meeting, our next meeting.
The, the library board doesn't meet.
All right.
Meeting after. We could have a meeting before if you wanted.
It's up to you. We'll, we'll move to whatever speed you want, if you feel like you want to hold off to your next meeting, that's great.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I'll second your motion, I just don't think this is major revisions, I think these are semantics and just emphasizing things.
So you might be able to handle that just in the email, and I would recommend that when it comes back, we'd just be on consent item, and then we don't, we just, yes, we just put on the consent agenda.
I would agree.
Well, we've heard nothing ma, yours are not major, I gather, Kurt. Okay, fine.
Okay, so it's removed and seconded, continue and, and have Kurt and Brian provide input, uh, and then the, as soon as the board gets back with us, we'll sort it on the consent agenda.
Yeah, so it won't be continued to the next meeting, it'll be continued to when you're ready to bring it back.
Okay. We will do it post haste.
So that way you're, you're not pressured to have it in two weeks, but whenever you're ready.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we need to, can we electronic vote on this? Okay, we're ready to vote.
Ding mouse.
That motion passes four to zero.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item is approval of contract for the lining of sewer pipes.
Actually, the library board municipal code was a separate item, so...
Okay, sorry. Um, let's do that then.
So the question is, because we have, um, delayed the previous, do we want to a, a, approach this today, or do we want to put it off until the next meeting?
I think with the municipal code, you can move forward.
Okay, so as we, um, as we put together the bylaws, there were a few things that we were suggesting be changed in the part of the municipal code that deals with the library to make it consistent with the bylaws, and you can see those recommended changes in your packet, and, uh, we're open for questions about those.
So Donna, thank you for doing this. My, my question comes in the bylaw E, you know, uh, you, you refer to specifically, it says council approval, this is the last lines, it says council approval, but consistent with the policies made by the council. You, throughout your document, you refer to the council as the city council, but in E, we refer to it only as the council. I would just recommend we put specific, you know, in the last thing, it says, "Which do not need specific city council approval, but consistent with the policies made by the city council," instead of just having the word council.
Okay. Kurt, can you tell me again where you're at?
It is I, section one, item E.
He's suggesting we just add the word city before council in each of those places to clarify.
Erin, you need to look at the staff report.
And, uh, ju, ju, just based on what Councilmember Braithwaite mentioned earlier, I am wondering just for best practices in paragraph D, it says the city council may remove, to be consistent with appointment, shouldn't we say the mayor with the advice and consent of city council may remove?
The mayor?
Correct. Tim, can I ask you one question? Uh, in this, really, the only change between, uh, original B and, and the new E is the, is the definition of rules and regulations versus policies. I mean, basically, they took out the word policies, or took out the word rules and regulations. I mean, for the, for the real content, the real meat of the change, um, it basically says the library board can now implement policies, it's using the word policies instead of the words rules and regulations.
Yes.
Is there, in your opinion, uh, Tim, is there any significant distinction between those two? Because it's comparing rules and regulations against city council policies, now it's saying board policies versus city council policies.
Um, in my opinion, um, you could make a technical distinction that, um, policies involve the weighing of broad, uh, competing interests and weighing the pros and cons of issues, that's how policies are generated, which is legislative in nature. Rules and regulations are administrative. I mean, really, that's the only, but, but, but I can see how they could be used nearly synonymously, but if I was being hyper-technical, I could see a difference there.
I don't believe the library has any documents that are called rules. I think all of our documents are called policies, and I think that's why we made that suggestion.
Which would keep it consistent with what you're working with.
Yeah.
But, but, and, and just one follow-up, I just pulled up the code, to, to, if you, if you wanted to be consistent with nine-seven-four-oh-four, the state statute says the board shall establish policies.
Okay.
So that's the word used in state law.
Good. The only, the last thing is, under B, I, I, the, the wording that's being added is confusing to me. Uh, I am not in favor of the added wording that's in there, I believe for simplicity and to remove confusion, we just leave it as, um, the current policy is, which basically says, "A, a term starts and ends, and whoever occupies that term, that's what happens." So if they leave three months into it, that term is still only a three-year window, and whoever, you can have ten people fill it during that three-year window, but it only lasts three years, and then you replace. Um, so each, each window is staggered. What this is, what this is saying is, if some people leave in the middle of it, then they may come and go oddly, and it, they may not be on the board long enough, and, and who's going to make those decisions about were they on long enough or not long enough? You just leave it simple. Here's the term, we plug this name into it, that's how far it goes. If they leave, you plug somebody else until that term is done, as soon as that term is done, we, we start it over again, and that's how...
And that was our intent, that that's what, what that would mean, I guess.
But that's, that's not what I'm reading into it, it seems way more confusing in how it's worded here than how it was originally written.
I think this may have referred to, I, maybe Erin can correct me if I'm wrong, this may have referred to, like recently, we increased the number of people on the board by a little bit, and we didn't, like, we added two pe, two places on the board this last year, and we didn't, even though they were added at the same time, we might not want them to exactly end at the same time, else there would be too many people ending that year. So I think this was in reference to when the number of board members increases to try to keep it so that there aren't some years where four people are replaced and some year where there's only two. I think that was what it was referring to.
See, and I, I think that the current language addresses that, and if it doesn't, I think we ought to modify that, but I, this is completely confusing, I would have never, I would have never read into what you just described and what you put here.
Okay.
And so if, if that's the case, you know, let's call it out there, but this felt like that, you know, if we have some people that leave the city and are no longer on the board or something, and, and if they're only in there for a year, then we could lengthen that from their term to be, instead of one year left, that they can have three years from the time they started or whatever, I mean, it was just, wha, whatever was trying to be attempted, I sure couldn't get it out, get that out of it, and I think that we just need to take another shot at how this...
Do you have a, a recommendation?
I don't, because I wasn't really sure what they were trying to accomplish, and I'd be happy to, to try to write something, but I just couldn't understand what it was you were trying to accomplish. I, it was my best guess that we had some turnover in the last year, and it was just kind of some way that...
Why don't we do that then? Why don't we bring it back, uh, with the other ones? Yeah.
Well, I'm ready, if you want to move to do that, that would be great.
Let me just make a comment quick before we do that. I, I, I think the intent was rather clear, that if someone left before their term was completed, that there'd be somebody appointed to finish their term.
Right, and that is, that is clear in some... Right, and that is, that is clearer in some of the other documents than it is here.
Right.
This is another case of where we were trying to not duplicate information in the different documents, and so that's probably why this one ended up being not as clear. But that's, that's very clear in the other documents.
It is an issue that we struggled with in the last go-around, so I think it should be clear.
Yeah. And I'm not really great at writing things the first time, when I try to do it the second time, so I'm not trying to be critical of this, I'm just saying, as I read it, I couldn't figure out what it was that you were trying to accomplish, and, and like Tim said, this was, this was a problem in the last one. So I'm just really trying to be very clear and very specific, and trying to make sure we get it right this time.
Brian, does item C cover what your concern is?
I'd like to move that we continue the library municipal code and have the library board readdress it and address some of the concerns that have been expressed this evening by Councilman Braithwaite and the wording by Councilman Ossler.
Second. The move and second to continue to have, you meant staff and board, right?
Of course.
So I have staff and board look at it again, and just like with the last one, just...
Yeah, we'll push your votes back to next, next...
And then, once, if it's come back sent email earlier, then we can just put on the consent item. Okay, that's, was moved and seconded, are we ready to vote?
It was seconded.
Erin, are you ready for a vote on that? Okay.
Well, mine hasn't come up yet.
Oh, okay.
I still beat you, I don't care if it didn't come up or not.
I'm having tech problems tonight, big time.
That motion passes four to zero.
Okay, now we're on to pipes. Is that you, Nathan?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, I'm pitch-hitting for Todd, so I'll try to give you the best information that I have for you. Go ahead. I don't have the...
I can move on.
Oh, sorry. I don't see it, my bad. My bad, we're having technical difficulties. So, as you know, we've had, we have quite an issue with groundwater infiltration in our sewer lines in the Pheasant Hollow and Hidden Oaks subdivisions. The, in 2017, we did a project called Cure and Place Pipe. What that does is, is it's a resin sleeve, if you remember, we actually brought you a sample of it, it goes through a pipe, fits the pipe, and then it's cured with steam. And that basically seals all the leaks coming in from the infiltration, repairs cracks and a number of other things. One of the things it does do is, it's estimated that the life expectancy of the pipe is actually lengthened by about 50 years. It's an option that we looked at, and we did much better than digging this sewer pipe up and redoing it. So if you look at your little handout, you can see, or at the screen above you, this is from our 2017 project. The upper-left corner is prior to the cure and place process, and the bottom-right corner is after. You can see the infiltration is quite a bit level, that's the kind of, yes, right in the middle there, that little fountain thing right in the middle there is, is kind of what it is. So typically, what happens in this process, next one, thanks. Typically, what happens in this process is that we'll notify every resident within the project area of, of what the project, of the construction timeline and what we're doing. And then it works that we actually work between the two different manholes, so we're only affecting two or three service lines, or laterals, as we call them, for each homes. When we're working between the manholes, contact is made with those, each homeowner to say, hey, this is what we're doing, this is when we're going to do it. They can do some routine bathroom thing like, things like that, but we ask them not to do high-volume capacity, like running the washer or dishwasher, or taking showers or stuff during that time. That, what that does, it gives us the time for the lining to go through, and then we go back through and punch a hole in the lining before we cure it for the laterals. So sometimes residents can be affected between two and four hours, depending on where it is and the issues that they run into. But we do ask them to restrict the high-water uses. You look at the project before you, a good portion of the project is in Highland Glen Park, we'll address that as the, we'll close restrooms as we need to with that. Next slide. We have two, two main streets that we're doing in this area. You can see the manholes and, and the thing before you, total, it's about 4,000 linear feet of, of what we're doing. Okay, next slide, please. All right. So we did receive two bids. We have one bid from Pipeline Inc. and one bid from In situ form for $94,000, just over $94,000. We're recommending the council approve a contract for that $94,232 dollar amount. The goal is to have the project done this fiscal year.
I assume the sewer has the funds?
Yes, sir, the sewer does have the funds, it's planned for, and I was looking for our numbers that we presented to you on the savings that we've had from the lift station to date. I couldn't find those readily available, but...
No one has any questions? I move that the city council...
No, I've actually got questions, I'm sorry. Because I live there in Pheasant Hollow, and this affects my home directly, so I do have some questions, okay.
It's okay to do the motion in a second, and then, and then we can discuss. So Kurt, we'll go ahead and make the motion.
I move that the city council approve the contract with In situ form for the price not to exceed $94,232 for the installation of a 4.5-millimeter cured-in-place liner for 4,000 linear feet of eight-inch sewer main in the Pheasant Hollow and Hidden Oaks subdivision in the Highland Glen Park.
I'll second it. It's a move and seconded discussion, and Scott?
Yeah, I've got a lot of questions, because this actually affects my sewer, and so, and Nathan's been good to answer some of these questions. So the first question I have is, who did the lining last year that went through the Pheasant Hollow Park and through part of the Highland Glen Park?
Pipeline Inc. actually did it last year.
Okay, and how do you explain the $50,000 difference between these two companies?
Looking at the bids, they just did it cheaper. There isn't, they seem, all the linear feet was the same, could be perhaps, I think, I believe the product is actually an In situ form product, so that could be where the savings are, I'm not sure.
And I hate to put you on the spot, because what we really do is need the city engineer here, but, you know, obviously, having a kidney stone's a good reason not to come to city council. But the question I have is, as we line these pipes, obviously, it eliminates the sewer connections for people, it can't help it.
Mm-hmm.
And so then they have to punch one through. Now, you're talking about it, and I'm asking these questions because I'm going to be barraged with questions.
Right, right.
You're saying it'll be two to four hours, and, but you can still use your things, but what, what indemnity and different things do we have if you flood people's basements with sewage? I mean, what guarantee do we have that they'll get those punched in quick, that they do it correctly, that my sewer is going to work? I mean, because it's really hard not to use your pipelines and different things as a homeowner. I mean, and people forget and different things.
Right.
So how do we know that they're going to do it in two to four hours and not two to three days?
Good question. So the two-part answer to that, one is that we have our standard insurance requirements, identification requirements that we do with all our contracts, much like we did with 6,000 West, so we'll be covered on that standpoint. We, both of these companies, when we did the bid, they had to install a certain amount of, of this product to be able to qualify. What that did is it, it limited first-time startup companies and things like that, they didn't have a lot of experience in that. So I think we have a benefit by having people that are qualified and have done this before. And the other thing is, is just respond to is our, is our experience that we had in our 2017 project, where we affected a lot of homes, we were able to manage it correctly and, and not impact or cause sewer backups or things like that.
In the 2017, I guess I'm forgetting where you affected homes.
It was in this area, it was, I should have put the map in there, I don't, I can bring...
I don't remember it affecting any homes in Pheasant Hollow.
Yeah, there were some laterals it was affecting, and we did some manholes and things like that also.
Yeah, because it was mainly in the Highland Glen Park and through our park.
So, that's my understanding.
Uh-huh.
But yeah, you're right. You know, we're, we're relying on the contractor and the information that they give us, based on experience that we've had in the, in the, in the past.
I'd recommend that this contractor or representative of them comes and meets with the homeowner association and explains this.
Okay.
Because I think there'll be a lot of apprehension. And I think in the city, because we live down in the American Fork Riverbed, and we know that the vast majority of the water that comes out of the American Fork Canyon is underground, I don't think we have a lot of other places where this occurs, other than Hidden Oaks and Pheasant Hollow.
No, we don't. We're limited around to the river where we have ground infiltration. It is a good product that we could use to rehabilitate older lines in the future also.
And, and do you know how old these lines are? I've lived there 30 years, so they've got to be there at least 40.
Yeah. I, I don't know the specific age of them.
Do we, do we have any sort of record or anything of where this company's had problems doing this? Do we have any references or anything? I mean, we know, we've worked with Pipeline before, but...
Right.
We've not worked with this company.
I don't know that, Scott, sorry.
So Scott, your biggest concern has more to do with the company than the actual process, right?
I'm not concerned about the process, I think it needs to be done. I mean, we've been telling people that the groundwater's high there, I don't have any problem. What I'm a little concerned about, and I'm glad we're saving $50,000, but what I'm concerned about is if you don't have a company with a good record, and you come in there and flood several people's basements with sewage, like we've had happen on the 6,000 West project on the road construction, that, you know, I, I don't think you want to go through that. I just think we need to have some guarantees that you're not going to flood our basements with sewage. And that's my only concern.
It's a good concern.
Well, I think, and I think, you know, when you have a $50,000 difference, that does raise a red flag.
It's about 30% difference. I mean, $50,000 on a million is the same as $50,000 on 150.
Right. And so I'd just like to have some sort of assurance that this is a really good company, they do a good job, and I'm sure it is. And I'm not opposed to this project, I'm just, you know, I just don't want my basement, all my neighbors' basements full of sewage.
Neither do we.
Yeah.
No.
Part, part of it is, when it comes in as a bid like this, unless, unless we can identify something that they clearly are missing out on, you really can't go with, you know, somebody other than the lowest bid unless you can specifically identify why.
Why.
And I think you guys have done that, but I, I think it's a great idea that they go in and meet with the homeowners.
We can do that.
I have the question. So are we ready to vote? Scott, you're...
Maybe, let's see.
Did you have anything else, Doug?
No. Yeah.
You know, you just, no guarantees of life, we do the best we can and, and go from there.
All right.
By the way, we're doing, we're doing this a lot at Tympanogus. This is, this is the way of the future for us, unless you have to increase the size of the pipe because of the need. The pipes that we're running to have more to do with the acid buildup and other things where the cement just deteriorates over time, and we can put this in, and huge difference. I mean, this is significant cost decrease. Technology is awesome.
That motion passes four to zero.
All right.
Scott, if you want, I can have Todd call and talk to you about it, to give you some more detail, if that would be...
Yeah, I'd just like more information, because I'm sure I'm going to have to explain this to a lot of people.
Yeah, and I apologize, I'm just not a sewer guy, so...
Neither am I.
So I'll get Todd to give you a call.
And we don't want you to become one. That would, that would be a problem. Okay, next item is my item, it's council committee assignments. I sent a copy of this out last week, I got some comments back from Brian, and we cleared those up, or should I say Brain? I had a typo in his name, and he said, "I'm not that smart," so give me, make me Brian again. We have, right now, we have three committees, four committees that don't have a, a council advisor, a mayor council advisor. If you look on the right side, it says unassigned, we have the beautification committee, the North Utah County Aquifer Council, the tree commission, and the water advisory board. Is, they can remain, I'd rather have the, I'd like to have the North County Utah County Water Aquifer Council covered. I'm, I'm willing to do that unless there's a council member that, that wants to step in there.
Does this have to do with North Utah County Water Conservancy District, or what is this?
No, this is a, a group whose charter is to look at our aquifer, there, and, and make sure that we find, we're doing what we can to recharge them. So we have aquifers that we get our drinking water out of, and if, if they drop too low, then in our case, we'd have to do a very expensive drill, redraw wells. We want to make sure that, to the extent we can, we're, we're doing things that can re, that facilitate recharging the basins. And this group is over that. We had one presentation for them.
Yeah, one thing that we did before, we've talked about at the mouth of the canyon, we have an area where we could recharge, and part of this committee would be to identify how we would get benefit for recharging.
Yes.
As well as the things you talked about, if the aquifer goes too low, it's going to cost us all of our waters through wells.
Right.
And that, that's a serious problem for us, but we talked about a recharge basin up there, so that when we're not using our share of water from American Fork Canyon...
Yes, instead of going down to Utah Lake, it, it goes...
We get the benefit from it, yeah.
It's a good idea.
And so this, the group was organized to help facilitate that, it's a bunch of the different water groups. It doesn't meet very often, so like I said, I'm happy to take it unless somebody has an interest in it and would want to sit on that.
I'd like to be the liaison to the Highland Foundation, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a separate, it's not really a city committee, but I'd like to...
I would, I was going to recommend that, so we'll put you on for that.
You know, and Mayor, as I look at it, you see that underneath Brian, you have the Mountain Ridge Park Committee, underneath, you know, Ed Dennis, you have the open space committee there, and then underneath myself, you have the Dry Creek Lake Citizen Committee. Those are all dealing with parks almost, you know what I mean? I wonder if you ought to have one person over all parks, I mean, unless you want to keep it this way, because you've got three council people really kind of working on parks.
That's a really good idea. I don't know if that's something we want to discuss now or consider for a later meeting to consolidate those.
I think we ought to consider it this year sometime in being able to do it. I think these are areas I would hate to change and get anybody to come up speed on other areas that are going on for right now, but I think moving forward, I think that's a great idea.
I, he told me last night, I thought it was a great idea as well. I think also with the changes coming up with the Loom Peak Public Safety Board, Commission, District, there's going to be some reorganization there, so, you know, there may be some opportunities to make some changes there. Yes, so it looks like middle of the year, we'll, we'll have another discussion about some of these, so we could put it in there, that would be great. Does anybody want to be the liaison to the beautification committee? It's, it's just a, giving them a single point of contact to call if they have questions or they have things that need to come before the council if they want advice.
I'll, I'll be happy to do that, since it's my neighbor that's in charge of that.
Your neighborhood leads, needs lots of work, I've heard, yeah.
It does.
I'm not going to, I had a word I was going to use, and I'm not going to use it.
Do you want, with Lehigh irrigation, I'm happy to kind of work with them, because when you're working with Dry Creek Lake, that really is dealing with North Utah County Water Conservancy District, a lot with the Lehigh irrigation, you know, because it's all flown into that.
Yeah, let me look into that, I'm not sure what our needs are right now, that's why it has an asterisk by it, but I'll, you're on there for that, and I'll just put myself on there, unless somebody wants it for the Aquifer Tree Commission. And I'll just put myself on there unless somebody wants it for the Aquifer Tree Commission. Josh, that committee is still going. It has a committee chair. We just don't have a council liaison. Again, it's not that you would have to meet with them, that just you would be available when they had questions. And again, I can, it's not a big thing, so I can put my name or somebody else's right there.
I don't see Ed Dennis here tonight. I think it's part of, part of our standards. If you don't come up, we volunteer for it.
We'll put Ed's name there. So without objection, we'll put Water Advisory Board.
It just teaches you don't, if you don't show up, you never know what happens.
So what's the Water Advisory Board versus the, you know, the Water Advisory Board is a Highland City Group Committee. I don't remember who's chair.
Tavis is on it.
Tavis is the chair. Former Mayor Thompson is on it. Jim Horrocks is on it. Dave Bunker's on it.
I think whoever you put with Lehigh Irrigation, you put that because they're working hand-to-hand. I mean, they're-
But one of the, one of the things though for this particular board is they're supposed to have some experience. Is that not applicable to city council member?
The board is, no, I, I look at them as simply, if that board wants to get something done, who, who do they talk to to start organizing? How do we get it on the-
Because I think the bylaws say that you have to have some experience in it.
I drink water.
That's good enough for me. Scott, I vote Scott be in there then. He's the most qualified. He drinks the most water.
Did Scott just volunteer?
Drinks the most water.
Yeah, that makes sense because, you know, in the travel industry, if you've ever flown on an airplane, you have travel experience.
That's true.
There you go.
They do meet early in the morning. I think seven?
They, they do, but they don't, they only meet once a quarter, I think, because I went to their last one. That, that's, the only, only reason why I say is they talk about it and then they feed in because they're coming out of Lehigh, they're going to come out of Strawberry shares, they're going to have, that, you know, that's all that going on.
Part of their job is to also recommend, their ordinances or planning commission recommendations for landscaping to help us be more water savvy in terms of-
Zero scape.
Zero scape, what we allow, what we don't allow, or things that need to change. So I see this person as being a helpful person to, to whatever they recommend to help see that that gets implemented through whether it's through city council, planning commission, and city-
So Scott doesn't take it, I'll take it. I'm just saying, if I'm going to be on Lehigh irrigation, it just seems to feed both.
Yeah, I, I don't need to be on the Water Advisory Board. I was just being funny.
To me, it seems the same. You're talking the same people. You know, I mean, it's all the same.
Okay. With that, then if, if you are all okay with the way things stand, do you have that up? She does. So the, the way it stands right now is up on the screen, which is the same as what you're seeing here with these annotations. Is this something that, Tim, is this something that we have to make a motion on or is?
I thought these were the mayor's assignments.
These are, these are more like we're, it doesn't seem to me that it needs that, but I'm just asking your opinion.
It's set for a motion. You could set a motion, but these don't require one since it's administrative. You can just assign.
Okay, so these, those are the assignments. And then there is one I believe we need to vote on, and that's the mayor pro tem. But since Ed isn't here, I will defer that to the next meeting and that will be an agenda item on the next meeting. So if, between now and then, if the council can agree on who they want that to be, that would be great and we can just have it as a consent item. Any other?
Mayor?
Yes?
So I'm just reading these notes, Cindy, and this is actually a question for you. One of these says that it's done by resolution, the North Utah County Aquifer Council.
Ah, okay.
So we'll bring back a resolution for that one.
Okay. So we know what it is. We bring back, that can't be on consent, can it?
Can, because we do basically roll call with the electronic voting or call for a roll call on that one.
We'll put that on, we'll have a resolution next time, put it on consent. Anything else?
No, just before we leave, it snowed quite a bit, so be careful.
All right. I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up. Is that okay? I'm on the North Point Waste Management Board. The interlocal agreement that was signed with all the North Utah County cities was for five years. It expired at the end of 2013 and then automatic, or 2018, I'm sorry, and then automatically renewed for two years. Councilman Shelton from American Fork wanted us to go forth and, and just present this and the council can think about it. But their feeling was is they would like to have a longer term interlocal agreement. And although some of these waste management companies want to set up their own transfer stations, I think what we need to remember is that 65% of the garbage and disposal that goes to North Point Transfer Station is local residents bringing their trash down there personally. And yet that only generates about 20% of their fees. And, and so their feeling is, is we need to think about maybe having a longer interlocal agreement than having it just renew every two years because it's hard for them to really manage and planning finances and different things. So just want to just throw that out. The other thing is, is I'm on the animal shelter board. And there's a group, and unfortunately, I'm kind of blanking on the name of it right now, but there is a group in the state who are very strong pet advocates. And what they've proposed to the animal shelter board is that, and I just want to give you a background, on the animal shelter board, they adopt almost 100% of all dogs. And most of the cats are to somewhere between 80% or so. Unfortunately, they have a lot of feral cats that are brought in. What the group is proposing and what the board is leaning towards is this group has done a lot of fundraising and what they would like people to do when they bring in their feral cats, instead of using euthanasia and different things, they would like to pay for, and this group will do it, all the immunizations and to basically sterilize these cats and then return them back into the wild. Now, their reasoning is, is that if they're sterile, then they don't reproduce, of course, in the wild and that the cat population will actually decrease in, in the feral state. And at the same time, they feel it's more humane. So the board down there is leaning towards doing that. There's not supposed to be any cost to the cities, but it will change procedures a little bit with animal control. So there'll be more information coming out. They just asked me to just kind of, just bring this up so people can be thinking about it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just one last, I, we haven't talked about Dry Creek Lake for a little bit. It's still moving forward. It still does not look like there's going to be any costs coming the Highland Way, the Highland City. They are just finishing up the park amenities. They're going to be coming around. And so they're just still finishing the drawings. We have not heard from Lehigh City because they're still trying to get their engineering done. What's been holding them up is the piping coming out of the dam and how that all connects and then what size they have. So there's, there's some things that they're trying to still work out. It's still coming down. I imagine the next month or two we'll be needing to do some other work on that.
Is the plan still to start construction this year?
They are going to be moving dirt probably here in March and in April. The sediment soil is going to be going, I don't know, some of your where, but you know, Hadlock Community, or Construction is going to take out all the soil. They have made, Patterson Construction has some property that came down by the dam. There's been a, they have done a property switch. And so there's going to, instead of the parking lot coming down in the Dry Creek Lake, it's actually going to be a through parking lot, which actually benefits us because it's going to get us better access to our property down there on the south side of the dam. So I mean, what we were working on this summer, we'll actually, you know, we'll be able to, that's the plan to kind of work through to be able to get access there and we'll have better access because of the trade they're doing with Patterson. So that's still coming down the pipe.
All right. Anything else?
Great, great update, thanks.
Scott, on the interlocal with the, the transfer station, is there a plan to say start in the middle of the year to revise that or?
They just asked us to bring it to the councils and see if there was interest in making it a longer interlocal agreement. Rob Shelton from American Fork is kind of spearheading a committee, looking at ways to do that. Because right now, the interlocal agreement automatically renews, but it's just for two-year periods and they were hoping to do it for five years or longer. So what they're going to do is revise that and have us bring it to the cities and have everybody look at it and, and Councilman Braithwaite can go over all the wording and, it'll work out great. So that's what the plan is.
Okay, so council, if you have any thoughts, I'm not just sharing with Councilman Smith and then he'll take care of it for us.
We're also meeting with Pheasant Hollow residents about the road going through. Trying to meet with them next Tuesday.
Are you talking about the HOA committee?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, the UDOT's still going through design. This is a check with-
And UDOT is doing an open house as well for all the residents. So anybody that's interested to know an update on the road, the east-west corridor between SR 74 and North County Boulevard, that open house is coming up. They don't have all of their engineering done. They don't have all their plans done, but they've got a, a big chunk of it and it'll, you can actually see what's going on and, and have a feel, a look and feel of what's going on. They need to have that for timing reasons to make sure that they are meeting certain requirements for doing that. When is that?
Is there a date for that?
Yes, I didn't-
It's the end of February. Is it an open house or public hearing?
A public hearing. Good point.
Because there was a lot of debate about whether it was an open house or public hearing.
It, it's a public hearing for the environmental document, which is a little bit different than public hearing that we're used to.
It's functionally an open house because you can come in and ask the questions, but it's, it's a public hearing so that you can give your input specific on this kind of thing.
This is UDOT's public hearing. It's not our-
UDOT's public hearing for the road.
And it's for environmental issues mainly.
That's, that is the public hearing, but they're going to have information on everything that's going to be addressed. Does that make sense? So, so you can come in and ask any question. It doesn't have to be just about that. They're not only going to talk about that.
February 21st from 5:00 to 7:00 at Fox Hollow Clubhouse.
Clubhouse, yep. So it's the golf course right next to where the road's going to be at.
Mayor, with, with all due respect, it's time for a motion. Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Favor? Hi.
Hi.
Hi.